This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. We really want to extend a warm welcome to everyone here who is present and to our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. And I would just ask right now if you could please turn your cell phones to silent if you have not already done so. And we really do appreciate the time that you've taken to join us here and for your interest in Waco Independent School District. Este Junta Reglar de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extiendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presentes y los que nos reservan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todas las conferencias están disponibles en la página de Waco ISD, YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esa página puede escoger su idioma así idioma. Así toda la información que fue descultida está disponible para todos. Por favor apagar su teléfono celular. Les agradecimos el tiempo que compartí con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. As the Board of Trustees, we are held to a standard of ethical values, ethical standards. We have, as a board, we have to uphold equity and attitude. So we, as a board, will be fair, just, and impartial in all of our decisions and actions. We will accord others the respect that we wish for ourselves. We, as the board, will encourage expressions of different opinions and listen with an open mind to others' ideas. Celebrating and supporting Hispanic culture is especially important in our community as 62.4% of Waco ISD students are Hispanic. From the exceptional services and support provided to our students by our dedicated ESL and bilingual staff, to community partners like the Hispanic Leaders Network, who are empowering our students through initiatives such as Nevagando Mentorship Program at University High School. We are committed to fostering growth and success. At Waco ISD, we are truly invested in promoting language equity as an integral part of academic achievement, ensuring every student has the opportunity to thrive. This is something we proudly celebrate and support. Okay, moving on, do we have, Renee, do we have any public comments? Great, so if you would please pause with me for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and meditation. Thank you. We'll now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge leaders this evening are Jaylee Taylor and Miguel De Paz Flores, both of Providence Heights Elementary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the recording republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if the board would meet me in front of the dais, please.
And now to recognize our pledge leaders who presented to us this evening. Miguel De Paz Flores is in the 4th grade at Providence Heights Elementary School, where his favorite subject is math. He plays both soccer and basketball, and he also enjoys spending time with his little brother. When he grows up, he wants to be a police officer. And I think he received the official Waco ISD Police Officer Patch tonight from Chief Goodman, so we're recruiting him early. Our other pledge leader this evening is Jaylee Taylor. Jaylee is in the 2nd grade at Providence Heights Elementary, where her favorite subject is also math. Jaylee enjoys being in the Girl Scouts and likes to play Tickle Monster and Freeze Tag. Those are her two favorite games. When Jaylee grows up, she would like to become an astronaut. The principal of Providence Heights Elementary School is Courtney Whitaker. Thank you for sharing your students with us this evening. We would also like to recognize this evening Isabel Ganski of Waco High School. Isabel achieved the prestigious Gold Key Award from Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Region at Large South for the second consecutive year. Her award is being received tonight by her art teacher, Joel Colosimo. You can see Isabel's spectacular painting on the screen that won her this award. Isabella is also a National Hispanic College Board Scholar who enjoys art, cooking, baking, and painting. So congratulations to Isabella. We now recognize Lake Air Montessori teacher Allison Davis. Ms. Davis is selected as one of only 25 educators in the entire state of Texas for the Texas Education Agency Teacher Leader Fellowship. This two-year fellowship allows her to engage with educators across the state as well as TEA leadership to provide input on strategic initiatives. Her principal is Kristy Yorman. Congratulations, Mrs. Davis. And now we'd like to introduce Alta Vista Elementary School teacher, Jo Spark. Ms. Spark was chosen as a 2024-2025 Teach+Texas Teaching Policy Fellow, a highly selective leadership opportunity for outstanding Texas teachers looking to deepen their knowledge of education policy and gain a voice in decisions that affect their students and the teaching profession. Mrs. Spark's principal is Lindsay Hilton. Congratulations, Mrs. Jo Spark. We would now like to recognize our Waco ISD Community Partner of the Month for the month of September, and this partner being honored is the City of Waco Fire Department. If you were on school on the first day this year, you saw firefighters at every elementary campus distributing pencils to students. The Fire Department initiates this with Waco ISD every year and has done this for several years. The firefighters are also regular annual guests at our Career Day events and also present at our elementary campuses during Fire Safety Week. The Fire Department also presents annually in Spanish to our students enrolled in the Summer Language Acquisition Camp and supports campuses in a variety of other ways throughout the school year. All of this in addition to biannual inspections at every campus and responding to fire calls, medical calls, and other emergencies. Receiving the award tonight on behalf of the Fire Department are Chief Scott Walker and Deputy Chief and Fire Marshal Gary Lee. We are grateful for the partnership that we share with the City of Waco Fire Department. Congratulations. That's all that we have. Thank you.
Sorry, as we get situated here. Always fun to see the kiddos hum and lead the pledge. Always a highlight of the, of the board meeting, so. Okay, moving on to item number five, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Ken Cannon.
All right, good evening. Well, that was short and sweet on our recognitions this evening, and that's because we're planning to honor all of our College Board Scholars and our National Scholars at the end of October because a lot, many of them are involved in tonight's football game. So that's why we were a little bit light this evening. So we're looking forward, or I know y'all are looking forward to that next month. So this evening, I want to talk a little bit about the Hispanic Heritage Month. I know President Quarterwig mentioned that. But it's a special time every year that we get to honor Hispanic Heritage Month. So just to mention a few things, you know, from classroom lessons to family festivals and events, our schools are providing meaningful activities to celebrate and educate our students about Hispanic culture, traditions, and history. Tonight, our board enjoyed one of our favorite meals of the year, and that was from Bell's Hills Annual Enchilada Dinner. I don't know how many years they've been doing that. Does anyone know? Long, longstanding tradition at Bell's Hill Elementary is always so good. And Tuesday night, I enjoyed the sweetest sights and sounds at Hillcrest Elementary's Book Tasting and Bilingual Literacy Event, and that was just truly special. It was, it was really grounding, you know, to stand in just awe of what elementary schools are all about. And it was right here. It brought me so much joy. Also, this week, our Providence Heights students had the opportunity to celebrate Mexican Independence Day. They had a fiesta, Mexican Independence Day Fiesta, excuse me. And GW Carver Middle School hosted a campus event with cultural dancing, food, games, and activities. Our University High School Mariachi Troianos, did I get it this year? Performers and their director, RT Lee Hatton IV, are in Colleen tonight. They're supporting the Trojans as they take on Shoemaker, which I think is going to be a pretty good game. They'll also be performing at our campuses and in the community this month. Other events include Alta Vista's Hispanic Heritage Parade, Lake Air's Living History Museum, and GW Carver's Community Celebration. We want our families to know that they should be getting communication through Parent Square on their campus-specific events, so look for that. Did I miss anything on Hispanic Heritage Month? Anyone know of anything else? All right, thank you. Tennyson Middle School dedication, we get to celebrate, and I get to celebrate with the community another milestone in our 2021 Bond Program next Monday at 11:00 a.m. That is a staff development day, and we've been scheduling those on staff development days so that our teachers can celebrate with us too. So we'll do that at Tennyson at 11:00 on Monday. And as we've been preparing for this event, I've been thinking about the new Tennyson and everything that it means to our kids and our staff and the community. And I look forward to celebrating and sharing about that next week. It's truly, truly been an honor to get to open that campus this year. I want to say thank you to Wendy and the entire communications team in advance for their hard work to make that a really special event for our community, and I hope you all can join us there. Hope all of our board members can be there. Questions about Tennyson? Okay, High School Musical Productions, as we do every year, we're going to have some productions that are going to showcase just the incredible talents of our high school students and directors. So mark your calendars for Waco High's performance of Ruthless, which will happen on October 11th, 12th, and the 13th. We'll make sure you get calendar invites for those. And then the following week, on October 17th, and 18th, and 19th, University High School will be entertaining audiences with Little Shop of Horrors. That's one of my favorites, and I'm excited for them. GW Carver is also performing Moana Jr. in October with, and there'll be two showings, October 24th and 25th.
Also not listed, excuse me, Hillcrest is doing a musical, Junie B. Jones.
Oh, yes, I saw that.
I don't remember the rest of it, but I know it's Junie B. Jones at some point.
February, they just did their auditions for that, I think. That'll be exciting. I used to read my daughter's Junie B. Jones books at night when she was in probably kindergarten or first grade. Great, great books. It should be a great production as well. So I want to thank all of our students and staff for their work on those productions and just showcasing the strength of our fine arts programs in Waco ISD. And then finally, I have taken the liberty to outline an attendance boundaries process for you all. You don't have to stick to it. It is my last meeting after all, so you can do what you want when I leave, but I do have some dates. I really, I know this work has to keep, the work has to keep moving. And so starting in November, I think is a good time for those first community meetings. And so I think I've emailed the board already and asked for your input on any community members that you might like to serve on that committee. So if you would continue to send those, probably send those to Renee at this point, and we'll, we'll work through that process. But the way I had envisioned this was a few meetings running from November to February. Five or six meetings is generally what it takes to work through an attendance boundaries process. And those meetings would consist of really looking at those maps and nailing down those boundaries with a committee. And then after you finish that process, then you would have public hearings and invite the public in to give you feedback on those maps. And so that would be in March at three different locations, the way I've outlined it. And then the board would have an ongoing conversation about attendance boundaries. And we were thinking about an October workshop meeting where you start thinking about the parameters that you want to give the committee. And then you'll, you'll have discussion after those meetings and in between just to kind of follow the process. I also think that those meetings should be posted as board meetings so that the board can attend all of the, all of the committee meetings and participate as much as you want. And then you'll come back after those public hearings, probably with the workshop in April, to make some final decisions and then take a vote at the April board meeting and communicate those attendance boundaries out in May. So your, your new superintendent may want to adjust those dates. You may want to adjust those dates, but that is generally how I've seen this process run. So I wanted to put that in writing for you so you had it. Any questions about that? Okay, all right, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Patton.
I just want to take this opportunity, don't know what I'm going to say, but I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Ken Cannon. Thank you for your leadership, your guidance, your mentorship of so many people. And thank you for pouring yourself into this community, into this district. You are a lovely, warm, caring person who has stepped in at a difficult time in our district, and you are leaving us better than you found us. And for that, I am so very grateful. I'm not going to try to make you cry.
Right now, that once today.
But from the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you for caring for all our kids and for caring for our community the way you have. You have, you are leaving an indelible mark.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Appreciate that.
Well, I wasn't planning on doing it right now, but I think now is probably as good a time as any. Dr. Ken Cannon, I was going to save kind of comments towards the end, but I think we'll do that now. I don't have the words. Now I'm going to cry. I don't have the words to say thank you. The, what you have done to come in and care for all kids has been powerful and healing. To see your ability, you know, we read, maybe it's just me that reads books on leadership and that, like, how to lead in tough times. I love Navy SEALs, and I love all these books by, all these leadership books. And, and there's something about leadership that's able to do the right thing no matter what. And you have overcome so many obstacles. I mean, a hundred-year pandemic, to name one, to keep your eyes focused. You have been laser-focused on the mission. And I think it was Rita Pearson that talks about how every kid needs a champion. And you have championed kids in this district. And I think that has endeared parents' hearts to you is you really are trying to do what's best for all kids. And so I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you. You have surpassed every expectation, and you are everything I had no idea that this district needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And on that, we got you a little something here.
Oh, thank you so much. What a, what a gift. You know, all I can say is thank you, and I just want to express my gratitude to everyone who's supported me. It's hard to leave something you love so much. I didn't think I was going to cry this much. It's always been about the kids for me, and it's been a pleasure serving the kids in Waco ISD. And I think, you know, being here took me all the way back to my why. And if you know my why, you know why that's, you know, you understand me. But it's been a very meaningful five years, so thank you. Appreciate y'all. That's all I can do. Thank you. I could use some tissues, though. I thought they were going to be. How about that? Thank you very much.
Doctor, I just want to say thank you to, wish you the best on your retirement. Thank you for being a great superintendent for our school district. I mean, like Jim said, you led us through the COVID pandemic, a winter storm. And then for the other, the new schools we get, you know, that's, that was a big part. And grateful for your leadership and improving our school district. You made our district stronger in so many ways, like Stephanie and all of them already said. And thank you for leaving a lasting impact in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Vedon, you appreciate that.
I was going to wait till the end, but you have a beautiful balance of grit and grace. And you don't just balance them, you have deep pockets of each. I frankly ran for this role because I saw in you a leader that was leading this place in a direction that we needed to go. And I was afraid that you weren't going to get that opportunity. And I have to say that's one of the best decisions I've ever made. I'm grateful for our friendship, but more than anything, I'm grateful for the commitment that you've made to our kids and how you've let the chips fall where they may and the rest of it. And it's been an honor. I'm incredibly sad that this is the finish line for you professionally, but I'm delighted that you will still be a Wacoan, even though you'll be enjoying an RV. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Well, dang. I don't believe this is the, this is the end of the road for you. You know, you have the talent. And I remember when a good, great mentor of mine, Chief Bobby Tatum, when he retired, I told him, I said, man, you're not done. You know, I don't believe you're done here. And like I said in the video, I'm leading into the school year. I remember whispering to you one day, hey, we can do great things. And, you know, I believe that, you know, we have, you know, setting a solid foundation, you know, for the district to build upon. And, you know, you're a formidable opponent as well.
Thank you. That's a great compliment. That means a lot coming from you.
You know, you're a great competitor, and that's what makes you the leader that you are. And that's one of the qualities I appreciated about you, and my, my family has too. And appreciate your support for our literacy program, supporting my wife and the book fest each year.
You fit.
And, you know, thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. I got ahead of y'all too, I'm sorry.
I had no idea that everybody else was going to talk.
You started it, Jim.
We let you go first on purpose.
Can we let you?
I've expressed to you personally how much I appreciate you as a person and what you do for the district. But I was reminded this morning, I asked Henry a long time ago, my son, what makes a good teacher? Because I had to answer a question, and he said, you have to be kind. And I, I've expressed what I think what I needed to express to you, but I want to thank you for just being a kind person.
Thank you.
And approaching all of the challenges with kindness first and for focusing on the right things and letting the other things fall where they need to. You've made a huge impact on our community, and I hope when everyone drives by, all the new schools that you've, that you've built, they remember who was, who got the ball rolling on all of us.
Thank you. Enjoyed it. Appreciate you.
Right, last but not least.
Yes.
I would just say thank you. Thank you for listening. That's one, if I, if I think the biggest thing that I've learned from you during my time on the board was always being willing to listen and see others' perspectives, so I appreciate that. I appreciate you always being willing to include our community. That was big for me, and I appreciate you opening those doors to our community members who might not always think the same way, but always, sometime it might be difficult, but I appreciate you being willing to open those doors. I also echo everything everyone has already said, but also thank you for advocating for our district and all public schools across the state of Texas. I think that's something that will go down in history as your legacy here is advocating for public schools across the state. So I definitely appreciate your voice and your strength and bravery in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Appreciate that.
Yeah, let's go around again.
Let's breathe. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Well, we were planning on doing that towards the end, but Jim started us off, so we kind of wanted to.
And I got ahead of myself, too.
We appreciate you, Mr. Patton. We're thankful for you.
The flowers are beautiful. Thank you.
Okay, we have, probably have school business we need to get done here. So let's move on to item number six, information items and reports. Mr. Grant, is there any questions? Anything you want pulled? Mr. Davis, anything pulled or any questions?
No.
Mr. Vedon, any questions on that?
No.
Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay. Moving on to item number seven, Consent Agenda. Mr. Grant, would you like anything pulled?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vedon?
No.
Mr. Guillory?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm going to look at seven F, G, and H, just a question on those.
F, G, and H.
That's the second reading.
Okay, great.
And then also, I'm gonna end up recusing myself from seven D.
Seven D recusal? Oof, you're making me write a lot here.
I'm sorry. And then, and then a question on, um, seven I.
Seven I. Approve change order. Okay, question. Okay, so I will, oh, sorry, uh, Mr. Ochoa, do you have any? Uh, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, so let's do this. Let, I will entertain a motion to accept consent agenda as presented except for seven F, seven G, seven H, and seven I, and seven D. And thank you, Mr. Davis. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Any question, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any question, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any question, Mr. Vedon? Any question, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any question, Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
Any question, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, uh, everyone in favor, say aye. Uh, passes unanimously. On to seven D, bid award for maintenance supply equipment and service. I entertain a motion, to approve, uh, entertain a motion. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Any question, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any question, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any question, Mr. Vedon? Any, no question for you. Any question, Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
Any question, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, uh, please note, Mr. Guillory is recusing himself from seven D. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item seven F, second reading of the board policy, D E, D F E. Do you want me to pull all of them together? Is that fine? Or do you have specific ones on each?
No, just general.
Okay, general. Uh, who is in charge of that? Let's see.
Dr. Gutierrez, but I'll take it.
Okay, great.
No, it's, it's, it's just a simple question. It's for, it's just a second reading. When, when, will this be brought to the board, um, to review, uh, some of the changes? And then also, you know, the final approval on it?
So, tonight is, uh, tonight is the final approval. Last month was the first reading.
I remember that, okay.
And so, um, tonight, you're approving those policies.
Okay.
You, you, you always have the ability to, um,
Table it.
To table for another month if, if that's what the board wishes to do.
I was, I was looking at some of the supervi-, um, supervisory authority stuff, the district, um, for the police department, some of the things that were, that were, um, taken out. Wanted to ask a question on, on why some of those things were taken out.
Which, uh, policy specifically? I know there were some Tasby updates on.
It was on page four oh seven.
Four oh seven?
Yeah.
Let's see if I can get to it here.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, that's pretty funny.
There's a lot of policy pages for four oh seven.
Sorry, mine isn't numbered that way on the, uh, printed copy.
It was.
You're gonna have to scroll to the next page. C K E local or C, uh, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, C K E A, local.
C K E A. They, so it looks like they deleted one policy and added a new policy. So, we, which happens with, um, Tasby. So, you would have to go back to the explanatory notes, um, for policy and those should be in there. If not, we'll pull them up. Here they are. C K E local. Yes.
I wanted to talk to you earlier. I didn't know you, I didn't know you were here, Peter. There we go.
Thanks for the help.
From the background. Thank you.
I was actually looking, I was looking for Peter before the board meeting.
He was looking to find him.
Tasby made those changes because of House Bill three and the shift from what was permitted before as far as who could carry guns on campuses and how all that worked. And so, they split it out into different policies. And that's, that's what came from all that. So, it's, 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 you, you have to spend a lot of time reading through it to sort all that out, but that's the bottom line.
And this was talking about the ability for the police department to chase suspects, things like. It was covering quite a bit in that particular area.
You don't have to approve C K E A local this, or, no, not C K E, C K E local. This evening, we could pull that one if you wanted to, we wanted to review that further with you.
You said it was replaced, though. Is that, and a lot of it was probably kept, okay. I would have asked earlier, but my, you just helped me with.
It said they, uh, they moved the provisions from this policy to C K E local. So, they deleted C K E A and moved everything over to C K.
Right. And in other words, Keith, they, they, they didn't make a lot of, of substantive changes, but they broke it out into, to deal with different scenarios as far as licensed peace officers versus non-licensed peace officers and for school districts that were doing different things with those versus guardians and marshals and, and those things. And it wasn't intended to make substantive changes in what licensed peace officers could do or not do with regard to chasing somebody.
Yeah, it was just a lot in here, even in public information requests and things like that. Stuff we really hadn't discussed.
Like I say, when you, when you, when you look at what they did with it, it didn't just get deleted. It got moved into another policy.
Okay.
But still there, it's just not, it's not, they changed the, the lettering on it, right? And they, and they split it up, but it's still there. But as Dr. Kincaid said, if, if the board needs more time to look at it, y'all could approve update one twenty-three excluding those, the C K E series.
I believe there's, there's some stuff we need to look at as a, as a board before this.
I know. Motion to table it.
To, do we want to, um, do we want to just look at all those, these policies? Are you wanting to do, um?
I believe seven F, um, G, and H. I think because it's, it's public information request in there. If we get, you know, Attorney General, you know, it's, it's quite a bit of information the board should look at.
Yeah. Is, is everyone good with that? Table in it?
Let's go ahead and.
Yep, that's.
If there's any of us that has a question, then we all should look at it.
Yep, that's great. Okay, so we'll table that.
Seven H.
Seven H. Sorry, I'm, I need to figure out which one do we table, seven F, seven G?
F, G, F, G, and H.
You want to table all of them? The specific one he's interested in is at seven H. You can table all of them if you want. The others are pretty simple policies, but that's your, your.
Let's, let's just go ahead and, and table, if everyone is okay with that, we'll just table all of them for the next board meeting. And then we have a, then ability to kinda go with a fine-tooth comb and, and make sure that we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is.
Do we need to make a motion to?
Yes.
Yes. I move to table?
Second.
Uh, seven F, seven G, seven H.
Great, to be picked up at the next meeting. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pose, it's gonna go to the next meeting. So, we'll have a month to kinda look that through and ask our questions. Okay, um, question on seven I, approve change order number two for TA, safety and security upgrades at Waco High School.
Yes, I was really.
Thank you, Ms. Vedon.
Oh, Ms. Vedon, okay.
They're coming from behind, behind the pillars.
I like that, okay. And so, looking at this, I'm really happy to see it, and the improvements there. The only question I had was about the notification. What type of notification that's been, that has been added to our system to let everyone or let the police know or our dispatch know that there's a threat on campus? Um, to kinda go along with this here.
That question, I don't know the answer to, but there may be somebody else here that does.
Suzanne Hamilton?
This is really more just about the.
Or Chief?
Yeah.
The communication.
Seven I. I'm looking at the safety upgrades.
Chief, you can come up to.
What, are you, which, um,
This is.
What are you referring to? Which notification? Are you?
I'm talking about notification within the classroom. Uh, I believe we've talked about.
Oh.
I didn't see that inside.
Gotcha. Okay, that's Jerry. Can you speak to that, Jerry? Sorry.
I didn't.
Elizabeth, if you would like to.
We got you now.
And so, I didn't, I didn't see it as part of the improvements. And I believe that was in, it was spoke about in the.
Safety grant.
Farm, which is, which is what, we have the Raptor, the alert, alert system, which is on everybody's phone. It also connects up to, uh, the lockdown situation. So, it'll lock down all the doors once they hit lockdown. But it's, but it's the Raptor notification piece on there.
That's inside the classrooms, I'm sorry.
That's in, that's in, every teacher has that. And the substitute teachers will have wearables that they can, that they can wear, that will get checked after them as they get into the, uh, building for that morning. So, and they, they are GPS oriented. So, wherever they're at in the building, if they tap it three times, it'll send an alert to the principal. And then tap it eight times and it'll signal that we need help.
Okay.
So, Jerry, when you say that all the teachers have it, is it on their phone or is it?
Phone, and it's also on their desktop, uh, of their computer. So, they have the ability to set that off. We also, um, are looking at a new phone system that will have it on every single phone. Have a, uh, press one button on the bottom.
I like that, yeah.
So, uh, because we realize that not everybody wants to put it on their phone. It is available to them, which is what the, um, it makes us compliant to be able to. We want to be more than compliant with them. We want to give them the ability to call for help if they need it.
Absolutely. And that goes, and that goes to dispatch and Waco ISPD dispatch.
So, the, not only do we get it on our phones, we get them through our email system. It's instant notification. My phone goes off all day because of the drills, but, um, so, we're receiving it. Dispatch is receiving it. It's immediately broadcasted. So, it's, it's instant notification.
Okay, and you've been here how long now, chief? And you have everything you need in order to make sure our kids are, and our, and our staff members are safe?
We're doing great. Um, there's some things that we might be able to prove on, uh, on the board later on, but no, we're doing well. We're getting people hired. Um, we've got, uh, we've got seven hired, three in the pipeline, which we, if we get those three hired, which we have shut down next couple of weeks, hopefully we'll be able to work.
Yeah, all this is great news. I appreciate you. That's what I had.
Hey, hey, Jerry, following up on, on the teachers, it's on their laptop. Is, is that where they have to punch three or punch eight times?
No, no, no. That, what, what, the Raptor is an application that can be on their phone. So, it's, uh, they, they log in right there on their phone and they, they, it comes through the, uh, the button system on there that's shut down, uh, lockdown or hold or secure. And once they press it there, on their laptop, it's the same look and feel. You just have to log in. So, they, you have it available to them.
So, it goes, it goes to our police? Does it go to administration at the high school? Or administration of that school?
Every, everybody that is attached to that school in our system gets it. So, even the teachers. So, if there is some, if they have, um, that notification set up on their phone, if the art teacher presses lockdown, then everybody in the whole facility, it's that notification.
Okay.
Jerry, do you want to speak a little bit to the Safe Grant and how that connects to this?
Sure.
State funding?
As I, I put in that newsletter, we've gotten so far about 2.7 million dollars worth of funding for that. And we need about probably eight million dollars to get everything where we need. But there's a lot of great things that are coming. Um, not everything is, is in place yet, but it, it is coming. So, Silent Panic Alarm was the first, um, rollout with Raptor. And then we went to, um, we've got fencing that's coming. We rekeyed all of the exterior doors. We put Knox boxes out everywhere outside. We've done, uh, some fencing and we're doing some more fencing to create secured areas within our campus, campus grounds, not just the perimeter. And then we've got, um, so much more. We got a.
Probably a full report there, but there, there's a lot of work that's been done.
The radio system, right now, um, every school is independent and has its own frequency. And what we're doing is, uh, bringing that all together into a unified system with the repeater system throughout the district where, um, if I'm on, if I have a walkie-talkie in my office, I can change the channel and talk to Waco High School. In a lockdown situation, everybody can move over to channel sixteen and it'll be, um, everybody that has those particular radios will be able to talk to each other. We've, we've modeled that after the, uh, city of Waco and we've met with them at their, uh, emergency operating, operations center. Suzanne and, and I and, and Chief met with them. We're developing an op, an emergency operations center here as well. So, uh, there's, there's a bunch of stuff coming to help us.
Jerry, do you have, um,
No, it's fine.
Do you have the ability, I know that we have cameras on, on campuses and in some of our athletic facilities and whatnot. Do you or your department have access to those individual campuses? Cameras and security feeds? So, like, if you wanted to, you could, from your office or what, you could hit, um, Cesar Chavez and see their cameras?
Suzanne watches them all day.
And we, when we, Suzanne watches them a, a lot. So, um, but we, the way it was set up when I first got here is that every campus had the camera servers on the campus, which is the older way of doing things. And then we brought them, because it takes a lot of input and output through fiber to get back to a server. When we built our private fiber in, we had the ability to bring it all back in. One of the unfortunate things about Carver is that when Carver burned down, the camera server was on campus, on site, so it burned with it. So, we didn't have footage. So, um, moving everything back into a local, our, our network operations center allows us to keep that safe. We have a disaster recovery center and, um, University of High School now that backs up nightly as well.
So, does Chief, Chief, do you have that access to see every campus security videos at, at choice, at will?
Yes, sir, absolutely. And some of our campus safety guards, their responsibility is to monitor the cameras at their, wherever they're assigned. So, we can do it at the police department. We can do it at each of the individual campuses. So, uh, the camera, the camera coverage is great. It helps us to be able to do a lot from preventing things, do some follow-up work. So, the district has done very well in, in the infrastructure and the, and the monitoring towards the camera system. And again, it makes, it makes our job easier again to be able to do follow-ups. To, uh, if we get an alarm call, we can pull up the space where the alarm call is coming from and see things live. So, it's a very good, uh, camera system. One the district should be very proud of.
Do we have camera access to all entrances to all buildings?
Yes.
Every, every.
Every camera. Every camera.
Has a camera on it. Um, and then we're, we're adding a few more inside to where they're one eighties because they weren't placed right. So, we're, we're doing some renovations there. But, um, across, across the board, every, every exit should have one. And if it doesn't, then we're gonna put one. That's with the Safe Grant. Um, we have very few doors that do not have one right now. Uh, I think there's two. And we've got those coming. Uh, one to, one to.
Okay, you don't have to tell us where it's at. It's okay. Don't tell us where it's at. I'll make that public. But thank you so much, Mr. Allen.
Please don't say it. Hey, thank you.
I think we've got our question.
I have a question.
Well, we also, just one more thing. Uh, when Chief was talking about the, um, the officers at the high schools, we have, um, set up dual vehicles for them that rotate through the cameras at that particular center. So, if they come in at any time, they can just look at the cameras and they're, they're flipping through all of the cameras at one time. So, um, and if they have, if they have the ability to have somebody place there to monitor them, they can do that.
I had a question about, um, you said, um, we're three away from the magic number that the board said. I just want to know if you feel secure with that number of officers?
I do. There's, with us being able to hire auxiliary officers to, to fill those other voids, we're able to accomplish that. Um, but again, there's, there's things long-term I'd like to visit with you guys about, where we might be able to save some money with, with the, uh, the expense that we're putting toward auxiliary officers. But, um, I, I need a little more time before I formally come out with, with a plan for you guys.
Do you have like a estimate on when that would be?
Uh, I, well, I'd like to present to the new superintendent. And I could do it, and we could have it ready for next board meeting. Y'all want to hear it that quick?
Thank you so much for all of the information, really good information. Okay, I think we have our questions answered. So, I will entertain a motion for seven I, approve a change order number two for TA, safety, security upgrades at Waco High School. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Vedon. Is there any question, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any question, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any question, Mr. Vedon? Any questions, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any questions, uh, Mr. Ochoa? Any questions, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item number eight, review discussed South Waco Elementary School construction project. Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mrs. Beretta, for hanging here with us. Excited to see this.
Dr. Kincanon, President Quarterwig, and members of the board. This is a, a fun time, we get to talk about awesome things going on at South Waco Elementary School. Tonight, we have representatives from O'Connell Robertson and from Masonic Construction. And I'm going to let them dive into the details with you on South Waco Elementary School.
How y'all doing this evening? My name is John Kazanis, I'm with Masonic Construction, I'm the project manager for the South Waco Elementary School addition and renovation project that we got going on right now.
And I'm Andrew Fouse, y'all have seen me before.
So our media team put together a video for y'all that kind of walks you through the inside and the outside of the uh job site as it currently sits. Yes, sir. So this is all the way back when, when we first broke ground on the job. If you remember, this was just a blank slate of grass out there, it used to be a farm field. This is a couple of shots of us drilling piers and getting ready for the structural foundation that we put in out there at South Waco. This is our local concrete subcontractor, JP Lowery. Since the site conditions are a little poor in that area, we went with a structural slab, which is what you're seeing built right now. It's a grade beam here and structural slab on top, which supports the, the building on top of it. Uh, this is our structural steel activities. Uh, I'm proud to say that all of the structural steel that was put up on this project was put up by Masonic employees. We self-performed every bit of that steel and it was a, it was a good, it was a good time doing it. We topped this out uh, in the uh, March timeframe. And I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew to walk you through some of this building.
So we, we started coming in the main entrance and now we're already heading down the classroom corridor here. Uh, we're walking now past the library and makerspace, that cool curved wall. So you'll, we'll turn around here and you'll see kind of a large collaborative area, there's gonna be a lot of seating for students. Now we're heading down the main classroom addition corridor, which is, we have classrooms on either side. Right here in the center is the treehouse, another collaborative space that people enjoy. Uh, but all of these are gonna be for our pre-K and our senior garden students. Each of them will have a, a restroom included right in the classroom with one of the little baby toilets. You can see between the new and the existing, this will be a nice courtyard space next to the library.
Yeah, so here's a big overview of the new addition, uh, not to forget about the gym that's also on the backside of the existing campus there. Also, I'd like to point out that this video was shot about two to three weeks ago and work goes pretty quick out there, so. It's looking great even further along than what you're seeing right now. But again, broad shot of the uh library there, some of our overhead work that the teams put up. Our masons are onsite and uh, it's, it's shaping up to be a very clean project, it's working out very well so far. Here's a, here's a brief uh time lapse from where we started, basically broke ground at the beginning of the video. And this will take you all the way through about a, about a week ago when we uh, we generated the video. There's our steel crew running and gunning. Our studs on the exterior, then you'll see the jip board coming up there, waterproofing, insulation.
Remix.
It was so nice, can't watch it twice. So I'm gonna go through a couple of uh work accomplished items that we've been able to do since we broke ground. If you remember, our GMP number one was approved in October of two thousand twenty-three. We broke this project into two separate GMPs to give us a little bit of a head start with our dirt and utility work. So in October, approved GMP number one, and during that time, we were able to do all of our site preparations, storm drainage and utility work. Uh, which is a great undertaking that was able to kick us on the right foot to get into the GMP two scope of work, which started with our foundation, which you saw in the video. We had a very wet early two thousand twenty-four, if you remember, the January, February timeframe was a lot of rain. And our concrete guys uh had a lot of work to do to get us out of the ground, so to speak. Uh, our slabs were poured in April. Our steel crew was able to get all of our structural steel hung in a timely manner. And again, that was completed in-house, very proud of that. Since then, our building envelope has been completed with our roofing completely installed and dried in. And our masons are about halfway through the building with the exterior veneer. Interior finish or finishes are well underway with MEP in-wall and overhead nearing completion. There's about ninety percent sheet rock completed within the school right now, with about forty percent of that area with a first coat of paint. So uh, a little bit further along than what it looked like in that video. Uh, finishes are also coming along with ceramic tile being laid in the uh, single-use bathrooms and the classroom additions. And they're working their way into that uh pretty library and admin area that we'll be finishing up here in the uh coming future. So this project is unique in the fact that we had a, a couple of um challenges. Uh, first of it being that it is a occupied school. Uh, South Waco, as I'm sure you know, is, hasn't skipped a beat, hasn't missed a minute since we got onsite. Um, and we've been working closely with the staff, we have Principal Attniff period of night supporting us, which has been awesome to work with. Um, and we're, we're proud to say that they haven't missed any minutes. Um, there was a little bit of a noise complaint when we first got onsite, but we worked through that and we're, we're uh good partners now, so appreciate Mrs. Attniff's support. One of the other achievements that we're really proud of is during the summer of two thousand twenty-four, uh, this last summer. We took over, demolished and re-poured a new parking lot in the front of the school. It's a fourteen thousand square foot parking lot with nineteen additional spaces. If you remember, this was an alternate that the board was able to accept that extended the parent drop-off lane as well in front of the building. This parking lot will serve as the main entrance for the school, uh, once we have the classroom addition done in uh December. Um, but we were able to get that done in the summer months to where we turned it over to them when they got back to school in August. So uh, they're currently using it for pickup and drop-off and from what I understand, it's been a much-needed addition to their day-to-day life and we're glad to do that for them. Overall, uh, the project is still projecting to finish on time, uh, despite the really wet January and February. Uh, our schedule's looking really good for the uh turnover dates that we've agreed to with uh Waco ISD Construction Department. And uh, the other grit in the hoes is our budget is looking very good. We're uh on track to give a large, large portion of our GMP back to the, to the board, or to the district, excuse me. I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew to talk about some of our engagement.
So yeah, as, as some of you were able to attend, we have the groundbreaking ceremony earlier this year as just this opportunity for, to gather all the community and just celebrate um this great new work that's happening in the community that's really going to give back to all the students. You know, we're gonna have a lot of great twenty-first century uh spaces, instructional spaces that are gonna really help uh the students to be able to learn. You know, in, in a way that's gonna be most beneficial to them. Um, you know, as you can see, Dr. Kincanon was able to give a nice speech there and there was plenty of media coverage for the event as well. So really a great event that the whole community got to celebrate.
So I've touched on it briefly, but I wanted to go over a little bit of our upcoming work. Uh, I prepared this uh simplified bar chart schedule that kind of shows where we're at, indicated by the red line in September. We're, we're nearing the finishing stages, which is exciting, and all of our RTUs are on the roof. Uh, all the electrical has ran to them and so we're ready to turn those things on as soon as we uh get some of our dust settled, so to speak. Uh, painting is on a bunch of walls in the classrooms and all of our MEP trades are working their way out of the building. Um, so here in the next couple of weeks, you'll see our MEP final pass. And then the painters will get the rest of the building, uh, and then you'll also see our ceramic tile guys following behind them. Uh, ceilings installed in those classrooms, ceilings installed in the admin area and the library, makerspace is a very cool area and that's gonna have a little bit of finish work in there as well. As we get further into the November timeframe, uh, you'll start seeing flooring installed. And start polishing the brass, uh, we're looking at a early December uh certificate of occupancy target. Uh, that was gonna give us a very smooth transition from phase one into phase two. And if you remember, this project is a phased project, so you have phase one, which is what we're currently in. It's the uh classroom addition at the front and also the gym addition at the back, not to be forgotten about. Uh, and the phase two uh is when we, you know, move into the existing square, or excuse me, existing building, which is uh, we call it areas A and B. This includes the existing cafeteria that we're gonna be remodeling and expanding. And also, I'd say sixty percent of the existing classroom space. Uh, we'll have that area from the January timeframe up until school ends in May of two thousand twenty-five. And once that school is out of session, uh, we will then take over the last bit, which we call phase three, also called unit C. And uh, we will renovate that remaining classroom space. And by the time kids and staff come back in August of twenty-five, they'll have a completed project, so. A lot of moving parts, but it's coming along very well.
Well, we appreciate it, I kept thinking when you were talking about the December finish line, I thought, well, Merry Christmas to uh, some of those teachers at South Waco. I know, thank you.
New spaces, everything.
Yeah, we appreciate you um staying within budget and on time and just the work that you guys are doing and allowing along. So this is really exciting for our community, for our kiddos and our families, and thank you for updating the driveway.
Is there any questions?
I was just curious if the concrete was the same process we use with Kendrick, no?
No, sir, no, that wasn't the nano-infused concrete, we don't have any uh polished concrete at South Waco. It's all uh mostly laminate vinyl, which is uh applied directly to the concrete slab, so traditional methods on this one.
Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Beretta, appreciate it, appreciate all your work. Exciting, okay, moving on to item number nine, Mrs. Benson. We're looking at the review discussed emergent bilinguals annual evaluation and program reports.
Hello, Dr. Kincanon, Board of Trustees. Dr. Kincanon, thank you for letting me be here today to be with you on this last meeting. And so this is a very special emergent bilingual report for me this evening, and I'll try not to cry. Because so many of the celebrations that I will share are possible because of Dr. Kincanon. And her support for our emergent bilingual students, our ESL and bilingual teachers. What you see before you is a program graphic that shows all of the systems and programs we have put into place at Waco ISD. When Dr. Kincanon first came to our district in two thousand nineteen, only one elementary campus offered dual-language immersion programming. And that was Brook Avenue Elementary. We now have nine campuses at Waco ISD that offer dual-language immersion programming. Another celebration is the addition of our bilingual teachers with every grade level that we have added at each campus. In two thousand nineteen, we only had three campuses that offered bilingual education up to grade five. Now we have seven that offer bilingual education up to grade five. We have also added ESL intensive reading classes at the high school level and additional classes for newcomer students such as Elda and Ella. And so one thing Dr. Kincanon taught me was design thinking. And I really, I use it in every, in my personal life, I use it in my professional life. And when we're, and when we're creating programming and designing programming for our students, we look at the, the persona that we're designing for. So in designing the dual-language program and building the program and scaling it throughout the years, we really thought about our teachers and our students. What are their thorns during the day, what's hard for them, what are their barriers, what are their hopes, what are their dreams? If I was to look in a pocket of one of our students, what would they share, what, what do they treasure? And this is who we designed for. And so before you, you have what I hope for our students, that they see their bili literacy and bilingualism as a superpower. Because they are becoming bilingual and you're gonna see that as I present to you today. And so we currently have one-way dual-language immersion, like I shared, at eight campuses. Brook Avenue is our campus that has two-way dual-language, in total making that nine campuses. The one-way dual-language program is an additive program which maintains the first language while students learn a second language. This is so important for our community and for our students because we are celebrating their first language. It's still part of who they are and as they learn English, we maintain that. The program at Waco ISD is for emergent bilingual students who speak Spanish as their first language. We also have dual-language immersion two-way, and that's very exciting too. Because for this program, you don't have to be an emergent bilingual, you learn, you learn alongside with emergent bilinguals in English and Spanish. So our English learners are learning alongside with their peers who have never spoken Spanish, don't have Spanish in their background. But they're also becoming bilingual and bilingual in two languages. And so here is one of our teachers, Ms. Raquel Sabido, from Laker Montessori Magnet with her students. Each year, Ms. Sabido helps to write Spanish literacy curriculum during the summer. She is pictured here with her students who are celebrating their math skills. If you can see here, the students have demonstrated their thinking process for how they solve math problems and they did this in English. You'll notice in some other of the slides that I'm gonna show you that they're doing other core content in Spanish, which is why I think they're so incredible and they have a superpower. Here is another student exemplar, this one is from Ms. Cindy Rojas at Laker Montessori. She had her students read the poem Me Times Two by Jane Medina. The students then wrote about the message in the poem, and I hope you've noticed how they're writing in both languages. This is an ex, an exemplar from Leo Santos. Me Times Two by Jane Medina. El mensaje de este poema es la reflexión y de diferentes lenguajes, pero ella habla español, inglés, habla los dos lenguajes porque es bilingüe. This is a second grader, look at the writing, they, this child knows where to put the accents, there's adults that don't know how to do this. He says lenguajes, which is a, which is almost like a tier three word. And he understands the message of the poem and that it's about reflection. And this is in Spanish. The students in second grade do language arts in English and in Spanish, equally fifty-fifty. And it's just incredible, you'll see more of what they're doing in that grade level later today. Here's some professional development highlights, this is always so much fun. Ms. Carmen Diaz Perez is here with us tonight, she does a lot of amazing professional development for our teachers. She also writes the scope and sequence and curriculum for our teachers and this training was so much fun. We are very hands-on in our trainings and we work hard to ensure that our trainings are relevant and include best practice for our teachers. So that when they leave, they feel that it was worthwhile. Teachers work really hard, we all, you know, we, we want to give them something that they can take and use right away in the classroom. Here, the teachers learned a strategy that good writers use to tell stories and to write stories. And it's, los escritores cuentan historias a través de sus dedos. Or writers tell stories across their five fingers, which is based on the work of Lucy Hawkins. We had such great feedback um from this training. One thing that I love about Dr. Kincanon is her vast knowledge of curriculum. It really, it really, I feel, makes her stand out in so many people that I have been able to work with, she's so. She's so knowledgeable about curriculum. It truly touched my heart when she mentioned to me once that she knows how much curriculum writing goes into dual language. It's like, it's, she knew. She knew through her lens of empathy, which she taught us through design thinking, just how much curriculum writing we do in dual language. In our department, we create all of the content, the resources, everything that goes out to teachers. Because it's not, it's new content. It's not written and it has to be authentic. So simply doing a translation or a transposition of an English document is not authentic text for our kids. We want them to see themselves in the text. We want them to see the celebrations of their culture. And so we create the content. Ms. Diaz Perez writes all of the tests for primary grades and I do the ones for three through five. And so in this training that you see before you, we had, we had brought the teachers together for a make and take. Because like I said, they have to, everything we do is authentic. And so sometimes it's hard to find certain activities to go with certain teaks and we want to make sure it's high rigor. And so what we did is Carmen and I, we got together and created all of these resources and lessons for them to go along with the teaks and the units that were coming up. And that was the make and take. And they were so thrilled because they went back and used these to implement the lessons for science and social studies. And so here's another professional development highlight. This was really exciting. Our, our team, we submitted a proposal to ASCD for the conference that took place in San Antonio on October twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three. Our proposal was accepted. It was on higher level questioning strategies and providing a voice for all students. We presented to a full house, four of us presented. We had so much fun. You know, we're so hands-on. And four members of our team presented. I presented, Lynn Calentine, Melissa Johnson, who's sitting right here, she presented. And Ms. Carmen Diaz Perez. We had so much fun and we made lots of friends from all over the state of Texas. That they're still emailing us, can you send us this? Can you, do you have this? Do you have that? And so really great administrators. And we got to, we really got to get to know people that were going through the same things we are, right? Like trying to reach their students, do the best thing for their students. And so just like we have so many exciting things happening in our dual language program, we have a lot of great things happening in our ESL program as well through our ESL Cafe. And so in Waco ISD, we have an ESL content-based program in elementary level. And that is when all of the core content areas are taught by an ESL certified teacher. It can be taught in a one classroom setting by that one teacher, if it's self-contained. Or if all of the teachers teaching the core content that are departmentalized have their ESL certification. We also have ESL pullout, which is when the ELAR teacher is the one that is certified and they are the ones providing the services for the student for English language acquisition. And we have this both in the elementary and the high school level. And so here's some professional development highlights. We really strive to build leadership in our teachers and value the expertise they bring to our classroom. Here is one of our district's instructional leaders, Ms. Dara Alta Mirano, conducting professional development for our teachers at an ESL Cafe. This one is very, very special. Just as we strive to build the leadership in our teachers, we also value the contributions and expertise that our students, parents and families bring to our district. One of the most memorable moments was our ESL Cafe in September of twenty twenty-three. During this ESL Cafe, we had one of our parents that presented. And she presented to a whole staff at South Waco Elementary. We worked with her to create the PowerPoint. She talked about Turkey, the traditions, the culture. She brought food. It was so beautiful. And what was really amazing was to see how proud her son was sitting there watching his mom present. And so these are our parent ambassadors. You know, they're, they're, they're the ones that come to our LPAC meetings, they support our students, and they become empowered to share with other professionals. And, and I don't know how maybe like it was for you growing up, but I know that's, walking into a school can be very intimidating for some parents just because of the respect they have for schools. And so we really build that in our parents, that leadership. And, and we want them to feel empowered that they have a voice and that they have so many things to share with our kids and with our staff. And so we're going to move on to student demographics. And so we have, in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we had a total of three thousand four hundred sixty-four emergent bilingual students. And out of those students, one thousand one hundred twenty-nine are coded bilingual and two thousand three hundred thirty-five are coded ESL. Of our, of our students that were in year one and year two monitored, we had forty-five of those students. And those students include some that were reclassified as well and now are English proficient. I'm really excited about this part because here are two of our ESL teachers. Just, just like we really cherish our bilingual teachers, we also cherish our ESL teachers. And these are two incredible educators. It is Justin Stanford and his sister Paige Stanford. They both teach at GW Carver and they've been there for many, many years. They exemplify the love and dedication that is so clearly evident at Waco ISD and why I'm so proud to be in this district. Justin Stanford was the teacher of the year for GW Carver Middle School in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And his wonderful sister pictured here with him was the, she's also an ESL teacher. She was teacher of the year in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and she also teaches at GW Carver Middle. And I, when I was putting this together to show the staffing, I, they just came to my mind and heart right away because of how selfless they are and how much they love our kids. And so we had two hundred and forty teachers at Waco ISD that taught in an ESL program. We had fifty-three teachers that taught in a bilingual education program. We had five who served under a bilingual education exemption and thirteen that served under an ESL waiver, which is a lot less than we've had in the past. We've been able to recruit many teachers. And so because I want to honor your time, I'm going to share highlights of our data, but I won't go through all the slides. There's like seventy slides. I'm not going to go, I, I don't, I'm going to honor your time and get you back to your families. But I'm really excited to share this because we've seen a lot of growth because of our dual language program in Tellpass. And so one, another thing that Dr. King Cannon taught me early on when she came was that when I was looking at my Tellpass data, I always compare it to the data, to the data of the state. And it, because that lets us see a big picture of where we stand across the state, not just within our region or even within our district, looking from year to year, right? And so I've always loved looking at the data that way now because I can see if our students are growing at the same rate as the state, are we growing at a faster rate, which is always a celebration? And so in kindergarten for Tellpass, Waco ISD, in looking at the composite score, which takes into account all the subtests, so listening, speaking, reading and writing, and looking at their composite at the intermediate level, Waco ISD was at forty-five, forty-one percent. And TEA was at twenty-nine percent. We were higher than TEA. Waco ISD was at eleven percent advanced and TEA was at thirteen percent. So we were just slightly below. And Waco ISD was at six percent advanced high and TEA at seven percent. Just think about that advanced high. We're just one point below TEA. And when I share that and I share more data, I want you to think about this. We are getting more and more newcomers that have interrupted schooling, that have to do so much work to even just get to that literacy level in their own first language. They're coming to us having completed their last grade, maybe it was fourth grade, and now they're coming as seventh graders. So I want you to keep that in mind as you think of our newcomers and you think of their work that is reflected here. They have worked so hard. And so in grade one, students at the intermediate level were at forty-one percent, which was an increase of six percent from twenty twenty-three. Waco ISD was at forty-one percent intermediate and TEA was at thirty-five percent. And again, we're higher than TEA here. Waco ISD was at twenty-six percent advanced and TEA was at twenty percent. We're also higher here. And Waco ISD was at sixteen percent advanced high and TEA at fifteen percent, almost the same as TEA by one percentage point. In grade two, in grade two, Waco ISD was at sixty-two percent intermediate level and TEA was at fifty-four percent. We were higher than TEA here. Waco ISD was at two percent advanced high and TEA at three percent, almost the same as TEA by one percentage point. In grade three, we were at intermediate at fifty-four percent, which was an increase of three percent from twenty twenty-three. And Waco ISD was at fifty-four percent intermediate and TEA forty-four percent. Again, we were higher than TEA here. At advanced high, we saw a six, we were at six percent, which was an increase of one percent from twenty twenty-three in grade three. And again, I want you to think about our kids and the barriers they're facing. And they're being compared to all the districts in the state, which is why I love that Dr. King Cannon had me look at the data that way. Because our kids are really working hard and so are their teachers. And in grade four, Waco ISD was at the fifty percent intermediate and TEA was at thirty-seven percent. We are higher than TEA here. Waco ISD was at thirty-six percent advanced and TEA was at thirty-seven percent in fourth grade, almost the same by one percent percentage point in advanced level. In grade five intermediate, we were at thirty-seven percent, which is an increase from twenty twenty-three. Waco ISD is at thirty-seven percent intermediate and TEA is at twenty-eight percent. We are higher than TEA here. And Waco ISD at thirty-eight percent was advanced. TEA is also at thirty-eight percent. We are the same here. In advanced high, we were at sixteen percent, which is an increase of three percent from twenty twenty-three. And so you'll see a pattern that is very similar as we continue across the grade levels. I won't go through all of them, but I really wanted to talk about those elementary levels because where we're seeing some that were higher and some, most of the gains is in the grade levels where we've implemented dual language. So dual language is really making a difference for our kids. And so now we're going to look at some celebrations in the STAR data for our emergent bilingual students. And again, I'll just do highlights, not all fifty slides. And so the STAR data is really exciting too. For grade three, we were at MEETS at twenty-two percent, which is an increase of one percent. And at masters level, we saw an increase of two percent because we were at five percent. So we're seeing gains also in STAR, not just in Tellpass. The next slide I'm going to point you to is slide thirty-three, and that is, those are our fifth grade students. Our students were at thirty-four percent MEETS, which was an increase of four percent. And at masters, they were at ten percent, which is an increase of three percent. So we, we're seeing growth in our fifth graders too, as we go up. For STAR reading in sixth grade, we also increased two percentage. At MEETS, we, we, we went to twenty-two percent where we were at twenty percent the previous year. In grade seven, in reading, we are at MEETS at twenty-two percent, which is an increase of one percent. And at masters, which is where I'm so proud of our kids, because in middle school, you know, they don't have a bilingual program. They just, they have ESL and they're really learning several languages. Every core content area has a language. Science has their own lexicon, math has its lexicon, social studies has its lexicon. We're going from class to class. And here, our seventh graders in reading are at eight percent, which is an increase in masters of five percent. So I'm so proud of them for that. It's very hard to get to masters level. In grade eight, we're at masters, we're at seven percent, which is an increase of three percent. And if you look at TEA, they're at twelve percent. We're not too far from TEA. You know, and, and like I said, these are students that came with interrupted schooling, many of them. They're learning several languages of core content and yet they're still very close to where TEA is. We're going to look at a highlight from math now.
May I ask a question and interrupt?
Yes, absolutely.
Before you get into math, going back to fifth grade Tellpass and then fifth grade STAR. Looking at Tellpass going up to fifth grade, we had great growth. And then at, at fifth grade, the scores that you showed me dropped. And then in fifth grade STAR, the scores dropped. Why do you believe that the scores dropped that year for fifth grade when pre-K, well, Kinder Up was showing such growth, but then at fifth grade, both Tellpass and STAR dropped?
I, I think that the reason that's happening, and I, and I'll tell you, if you look at the data from the state, it has very, a very similar pattern. There were different types of questions added to STAR. And the students are really also learning a test. They're learning a new type of test, a new type of questions. We work really hard in our department and in the ELAR department with Ms. Trigg to develop tests that are very similar, that include those new types of questions. I feel like though that could have had, that could be one of the reasons they're adjusting to the new test. And also because we have a lot of newcomers in, in those classes who have never, some of them have never been in school. Some of them, the last grade of schooling they had was maybe in first grade and now they're in fifth grade, learning. We had a student in fourth grade that didn't know how to write his name. I'm just going to give you that example. That was one of our, it was one, in one of our campuses. He's now in his third year being here and he's learned a lot. But this is an example of some of the things that our kids are facing. And so, and so what happens is as, as the students are learning how to use their language to learn and they're using their language to tackle texts that is at a higher level and has multi-syllabic words, that's when we really start to see them struggle. And so we have ESL strategists that help them with that.
So if I'm understanding you right, Dr. Benson, you're saying that the fifth grade, both in Tellpass and at STAR, that, that test becomes more, more difficult?
Yes.
At fifth grade?
It does.
I'm going to assume that we have new people coming in at all the grades.
Remember, can I interrupt?
Certainly.
Remember that this is the new STAR test. So this is that redesigned test where we all took a set, a step back because of the, all the different question types. The scale score changes there, they, that they increase to get to the next level. So everything that applies to STAR also applies to these kids. And then you have a lower denominator.
Right.
Because you have less, you have smaller.
Was Tellpass also for fifth grade? Was that?
Yes, they were both changed and now they have to do the same thing for, actually because Tellpass had such a huge change, they were not even to include one of, one of the subcomponents in it. Because it was just such a huge change and it's, there, it's like comparing apples to oranges right now.
I was just, I mean, the.
That's a very good question.
The data you're showing was really impressive until we hit fifth grade. And then I, I saw the change and I wanted to know why before you hit math. So thank you for letting me.
Absolutely. And that's why I was so proud of the kids after they, they kind of go through that hump, you know? Absolutely. And that's why I was so proud of the kids after they, they kind of go through that hump, you know, that transition? Because then we start to see it go up a little bit more. But they really, it's hard. It's, they're getting used to that and we're really working hard to write those type of questions to get them used to that, to build that writing stamina and so that they, and also so that they understand what a multi, like in Telpass, it's not just one question. That one question might have several questions embedded. And so now they're having to type out their answers and write out their answers. And so it's a whole different type of test than what they saw in the past.
Is also computerized?
Yes, sir.
It has been an adjustment in of itself, because kids are, you know, speaking into microphones and you could speak, but it, there's, there was a huge shift from teachers doing that work with kids to, um, kids doing that on the computer.
And they're learning the technology of how to input the answers.
Really another language in of itself. The reading scores are impressive and, um, I just, uh, would encourage you guys to really focus in on grade five.
Yes.
That's obviously somewhere we're having a transition from, you know, to more difficult, passages and, uh, more intricate, uh, concepts. This looks great.
No, it's, it, thank you so much, though, because you're, you're absolutely right. And so in, in grade six for math, uh, we were at meets at sixteen percent, which was an increase of two percent. And in grade six for masters in math, we were at five percent, which was an increase of one percent. But if you look at our math and TEA's math, they were at seven percent, we were at five percent. So there, we're very close again to TEA. So now we're going to go to grade eight. And so in grade eight for math, we were at meets at twenty percent. We grew five percent here, which, um, I was really, I was really proud of the kids here. And so this is STAR Biology. Um, we were at approaches at seventy-two percent, which is an increase of five percent. Meets, we were at two percent, twenty-two percent, which is an increase of four percent. And at masters, we were at two percent, which is an increase of one percent. And one thing I want you to notice on this slide is for our students that have reclassified and are in the monitor stage now where we're monitoring them. If you look to the right, uh, where it says monitored year two, they're at one hundred percent. And at TEA, for example, at masters was at thirty-one percent. Our kids were at a hundred percent. So there, once our kids learn English, the curriculum we all have in place here and the teachers we have, they really make an impact on our kids and help them to be successful. So I'm going to talk about English one and two now. This is, um, an increase that I'm really proud of, because our students in these grades have some of the highest need. Because what happens when you're a bilingual person and you've had a learned history in a first language, it's very hard when you're learning. The longer that learned history is of that, of those sound symbol correspondence. We share the Roman alphabet, which is wonderful. But not all our students are Hispanic. We have students that speak Arabic, Mandarin Chinese. They're Roman, they don't have a Roman alphabet. They come from a graphic language. And so when I see the scores for English two, I was just so proud of our kids. Um, we are at approaches at forty-two percent, which is an increase of two percent. But at meets, we're at twenty-four percent, which was an increase of nine percent. For, for us and our department, that was a huge celebration, because we have so many newcomers at this level. Uh, and they could easily drop out of school, you know? And, and they're seeing those gains and success breeds success, and they're staying in school, because they're seeing that they're growing and they're being successful. And so, um, I'm going to share the data from Algebra One. At masters, we were at ten percent, which was an increase of two percent. And TEA was at seventeen percent. And for STAR, US History, at masters, we were at nine percent, which is an increase of three percent. TEA was at fourteen percent. And US History has a lot of text, a lot of reading, so I'm really proud of the kids. So now we're going to go to our community partnerships. Um, this, this part of the presentation, I'm really excited about. There's a lot of celebrations here and there's a lot of community, um, involvement here. And I think without our community, you know, one of the things that I, I love about Dr. King Cannon is that those, those partnerships have really been strengthened, like the partnership with his Hispanic Leaders Network, the, through Navegando and their mentorship. And you're going to see that here reflected in the presentation. And so, um, the first one I want to share is a design thinking workshop in Spanish. This is our Waco High Cohort, and I'm so excited. Um, the previous year, we did university high school. This was our Waco High Cohort. They were actually in the news, because a group of the students, um, did a proposal, um, for, for mental health. And that's something that we're working on, because they came up with a group that would be able to help other students who are newcomers and don't speak English through mental health. And so again, this was our cohort. This year, we will have our third cohort. And so we're really excited about being able to share the design thinking with our students. The next thing I want to share is through our partnership with the Hispanic Leaders Network with Navegando. Our students were able to visit McLennan Community College and TSTC. I included the picture of the girls looking at all of the robotics and the tools. I love cars, everything about cars. Grew up fixing cars with my brother. And so when I see girls excited about non-traditional things, that's like huge for me. We need more women in industry like this. And so they got to go to TSTC. The tour was in Spanish. They got to go to McLennan Community College, and that tour was in Spanish, so nobody was left out. The Navegando mentors also meet with the students every month. They could, they also bring guest speakers who are community leaders that speak to the students about opportunities in the community and different resources for the students that they may not know about or their families might not know about. And so this one, I'm so excited about, because I've known Mr. McAdoo for years. I've known him since he became principal at GW Carver Middle School. And he would be so embarrassed, because he does not like a lot of attention about things like that. But he is the champion for our kids. He has always been an advocate for our emergent bilinguals. And from the time he came to GW Carver, he has done so much to help our students. He serves on the board for Hispanic Leaders Network. I'm not sure if you all knew that, but he really, really champ, is a champion for our kids. And, um, I just said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna write it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna nominate him, because he's done so many great things. And he won for Region Twelve, out of everyone that was there, that was nominated. And Region Twelve is pretty big. And he won, and not only is this a great honor for Mr. McAdoo and our district, it's a great honor for the community as a whole, um, because it shows the quality of the leaders we have at Waco ISD. And I want people to look at our district and say, look, they have the regional, the Region Twelve Leader of the Year for High Schools for Emergent Bilinguals at Waco ISD. So we also had Language Acquisition Summer School. Um, we had it from June third to June twenty-eighth at Bell's Hill, and a hundred forty-one emergent bilinguals attended the program. And we had sixty-four from pre-K and seventy-seven from kindergarten. And it, we always have lots of fun. Um, you know, the, the firefighters always come and do a safety presentation, which I always learn something, I get a pearl, the kids always learn something. And so that's very valuable for us as well. And so this is one of the last data pieces I'm going to share with you. And I am so grateful for the teachers about this, because I, this would not be possible without our teachers, our ESL strategists and our tutors that work with our kids. In two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we were at eight-point-one percent dropout rate. And in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the last data point that we received, because we're always a year behind in, in, um, in that data, we were at two-point-six percent dropout rate. Our emergent bilingual graduation rates for the class of two thousand and twenty-three was at ninety-one-point-nine percent, which is an increase of seven-point-two percent from the previous year. So it's all the teachers, it's all the teachers, the tutors, the strategists, they're keeping our kids in school. So this part is for Dr. King Cannon. This is just for you. This is the most special part of this presentation. Our gift for Dr. King Cannon from the students. They are your legacy, Dr. King Cannon. Sometimes when we are so selfless like you, and we pour our love to kids and our time, and we just, you throw yourself in there a hundred and eighty percent. We always wonder, like, did I do enough? Should I have done this? Should I have done that? And I want you to know that you've done so much, that thank you is, is not enough. It, it's reflected in our new schools that we're going to have. It's reflected in our curriculum. It's reflected in all of the programming and systems you've put into place that we needed desperately. And the legacy that you're leaving our community of biliteracy, I don't even know how to say thank you, because we're going to see that in a few years. And just like, there's a story I love, and my team knows this story. It's about the olive growers and how they, how the, the fathers, they grow, they grow the, they grow the groves for their, for their sons. And they give them to them, but they don't get to see the, the fruit. They don't get to see the olives right away. And so they do it and they sacrifice and do that, so that the future generations have that. And so your love for the Hispanic community and all of your students is evident in the gift of biliteracy that you have so kindly and with so much love bestowed upon them. Their words of gratitude for you are reflected in these letters. I could not include all of them, but I wanted to share some of these with you and our Hispanic community that's watching from home. Septiembre seis, mil novecientos veinticuatro. Querida doctora King Cannon. Gracias por ser tan buena con mi maestra. La señora Rojas me enseña a leer inglés y español. Feliz jubilación. Atentamente, adelí sabido. This is the same class now, the same students. September sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Dear Dr. King Cannon, thank you for being a great leader in our community. Writing in Spanish is my favorite part of the day. I am a better reader and writer in both languages because of my dual language teacher. Enjoy your time off and visit Japan for me. Sincerely, Alejandro Peñandés. Septiembre ocho, de mil novecientos veinticuatro. Querida doctora King Cannon, gracias por darme una clase dual. Me gusta hablar los dos idiomas. Mi familia habla mucho español y yo estoy aprendiendo inglés. Con cariño, Noah Trejo. September sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Dear Dr. King Cannon, thank you for giving Lake Air dual language classes. It has been fun learning in Spanish to help my English. My sister is in middle school and she based out on dual language. She is not as good as I am in reading and writing in Spanish. Sincerely, Angel Pérez. And there's a reason that I chose Dr. Dr. King Cannon, um, Lake Air, because it's an example of what your love and belief in our kids has done. When you came, the dual, the bilingual program at Lake Air was only up to kindergarten. And there was so much opportunity there. And now we're up to fifth grade. And just, and I wanted to use that as an example of what you'll see across all of our other campuses that are up to fifth grade, and it's because of you. Thank you for giving our students your love and the gift of biliteracy for our community.
Thank you, and thank you for doing the work. You did amazing work. Thank you, Grace. Awesome. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Is there any questions or any comments? Mr. Ochoa?
Uh, two comments, actually. Um, one, I have a former student, um, who graduated from university high school, and she is now a mentor, um, for HLN. And she has her degree now in molecular bio, master's degree in molecular biology, and she works for, um, Waco Family Medicine. So it's incredible to see her mentoring students in a classroom that she used to, to be in.
Is that a Londra? I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is that a Londra?
It's a Londra, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I love a Londra, yes.
This is just so huge, you know, on, 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 on the list of accomplishments that you have. I, I had called Miss Benson a few weeks ago to ask her a question about something, and she spent the first ten minutes talking about you and all the programs that you brought. But, you know, it's one of those things where i- 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 it's like it's expressed in those letters, where we don't, we don't really know what a kid is going to excel at until we create those opportunities for them to be exposed to them. And, and, you know, when you look across all the schools, you brought this dual language program, too. I mean, you just, there's no way to, to tell how many lives, you know, that you've changed. So thank you for doing that.
For these kids.
And the community, too. I'm, I'm in so many organizations, and they're always asking me, do you know anyone that can interpret? Not everyone that speaks Spanish can interpret. Do you know anyone that can help us with translating? You know, and these are hospitals, attorneys. I mean, these are going to be your legacy, Dr. King Cannon. They're going to go into the community and be our doctors, our nurses, our lawyers, business owners, and they're going to speak and write in English and Spanish, which is huge for the community.
And thank you again to you and your team for, for doing your work with just so much enthusiasm. We appreciate it.
We love it, and we're very humbled to be able to do that here. We love our district.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is great work, Dr. Benson. Thank you so much, really. And, uh, item number ten. I feel like we could just go from South Waco to bilingual, and now we've got another amazing, uh, item up that I'm more than sure a lot of people are going to be excited about. Item number ten, Dr. Lopez's review discussed take-up production regarding retention bonuses for paraprofessionals and auxiliary personnel.
Well, good evening, President Cordwig, Dr. King Cannon, and members of the board. Uh, we have brought to you, over the three years I have been here, many opportunities to help our employees monetarily uh, and provide an option for them to stay here with us. And so this is the final retention bonus I'm bringing to you this year, I believe, with S-R Money. And, uh, it is for our paraprofessionals and auxiliary. We're asking, uh, that you approve a seven-hundred-dollar retention bonus for all regularly-employed paraprofessional staff in the two-hundred-one to two-hundred-nine pay grades. Seven-hundred-dollar retention bonus for all regularly-employed auxiliary staff in the three-hundred-two to three-hundred-one pay grades. These auxiliary and paraprofessional staff would need to be hired on or before August fourteenth, uh, to receive this retention bonus. This bonus, uh, will go to all employees regardless of whether, that are in those pay grades, regardless of whether they have already received a retention bonus this year or have been on cycles throughout the last three years. Uh, the administration, um, and so the impact of that is five-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, five-hundred dollars. The impact is on seven-hundred-and-ninety-five employees. Uh, they'll receive it on their September, they'll receive a separate check on September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. And we ask that you approve the retention bonuses as presented.
I move.
Do we have a second?
I second.
I figured this would be quick. I don't think there's any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passive administration. Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Appreciate it, okay. Oh, this one's mine. Review, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding a resolution to nominate candidate for the McLennan County, McLennan Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Keith Gilery has for two years? No, longer than that, hasn't he?
It's been three, four years.
Three or four years, maybe. Has been serving on this board. And so we're so thankful for his time and dedication to this. He has labored not only with the Waco YSD board, but has also served on this other board. So we are so, so thankful for that. And want to extend a, oops, I'm on the wrong thing. Want to see, I had spoken to Mr. Patton if he would be so willing as to take that, and he has agreed. So I am going to recommend that we nominate Mr. Patton for the McLennan County Appraisal District Board of Directors. And we are gonna approve the resolution to submit the nomination for the chief appraiser as presented. Do we have to take a vote on that? Yes, okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Patton, thank you so much for taking the torch from Mr. Gilery. Serving on that. From the firefighter, yeah, maybe that's not the right metaphor on that one.
City employee.
City employee, that's right. Thank you, Ms. Cox, without announcements.
Good evening, Madam President. Dr. King Cannon, I'm gonna look down because I've already been saved from having to set up the recognition of what this meeting means. So I'm gonna jump right in. This Friday and Monday, our student and staff, student holiday staff development day ahead of next week being UHS's homecoming week. We're already there. The UHS homecoming football game is next Thursday night at 7:00 p.m. versus Lampassus. We have to wait a little bit longer for our Lions. Waco High homecoming will be celebrated in conjunction with their October 18th football matchup versus Colleen Ellison. Dr. King Cannon mentioned the Tennyson Middle School dedication on Monday at 11:00 a.m. And the following day, we have the opportunity to further celebrate her at her retirement celebration at 4:00 p.m. at Ridgewood Country Club. I'll be following up with all of you about some of those details over the next day or two. Our next currently scheduled special board meeting is October 4th.
Okay, great. Board, we are gonna go to a closed session, but I think it is only right and fitting that we honor Dr. King Cannon for her last board meeting. So if you'd stand with me.
Thank you.
We didn't coordinate the streamers with the confetti, so I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. I was trying to quickly add up how many board meetings I've prepared for over the last, whoo, how many years? 14 as a superintendent, probably nine before that as an assistant super deputy soup. I think it's around 400.
Just a couple.
So it's just a few meetings. Anyway, thank you for everything this evening, I appreciate it.
Okay, so the Waco YSD Board of Trustees will not go into closed session at 7:54. Thank you. This time pursuant of the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Sections Point 071, Point 072, and Point 074. No action, I believe, will be taken when we reconvene. Okay, and we are closed now at 9:23.